Quiet, please. Shh. Thank you. Hello and welcome to the New York City Higher Inn Head on the Committee on Finance. Please silent all electronic devices. At no time, please do not approach today's. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. And one of us is Sergeant at Arms will kindly assist you. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation, Chair. We're ready to begin.
Thank you, Sarge. Okay, good morning. Well, no, good afternoon. And welcome to today's Finance Committee meeting. I'm Councilmember Brandon. I chair the Committee on Finance. We've been joined this afternoon by Councilmembers Salam, Carr, Brooks Powers, Ayala, and Brewer. We've also been joined by Councilmember Moya on Zoom. Today, the committee is holding a hearing on a pre-considered introduction, sponsored by myself and Councilmembers Sandy Nurse and Natasha Williams, which would make significant reforms to the city's process of collecting outstanding property taxes and charges. It would authorize the Department of Finance to conduct the sale of this debt with a new set of comprehensive protections for homeowners and tenants that shifts focus towards home preservation and resolving debt rather than solely on collection of debt by any means. I want to thank the Finance Division staff for their work in preparation for this hearing, specifically my Deputy Director Emra Dev, State and Federal Legislative Counsel Alan Liebowitz, Chief Economist Delaura Dimnaku, my Committee Counsel Mike Toomey, my Senior Advisor Jonathan Yerden, who've put in a ton of work on this bill over the past almost two years. And today is a culmination of a lot, a lot of hard work behind the scenes. So I'm very grateful to everyone that helped out. The city first began selling liens on delinquent property tax in 1996, along with water, sewer, and certain other municipal charges as a replacement method to collect delinquent property taxes without the financial obligations of foreclosing on and directly administering delinquent properties. Before the lien sale, the property tax delinquency rate sat at nearly 5%. Since adoption of the lien sale program, nearly 80% of property owners pay the full amount owed or access a payment plan or exemption before the lien is sold. As of FY '23, the delinquency rate was 2.2%. However, the council has repeatedly recognized the tax lien sale as practiced disproportionately harmed homeowners in communities of color and lower-income communities. A report by the Coalition for Affordable Homes found nearly 2/3 of the lien sales sold in the 2021 sale were in areas where over half the homeowners identified as non-white or Hispanic, while over a quarter of the lien sales were in areas where homeowners reported incomes of less than $75,000. The property tax is the city's largest source of revenue, and it's important this resource be collected in order to fund the everyday programs and services necessary to support all New Yorkers. But the council has been and remains willing to let authorization for the lien sale expire rather than collect funds at the expense of driving foreclosure and homelessness among our most vulnerable. For over half a year, the council has worked with advocates and the administration to develop necessary reforms to curb the harm inflicted on communities while upholding our fiscal responsibility to the city. This bill would continue a shift of how the city approaches this debt, taking a broader view of resolving its underlying causes. To do that, we look towards four key goals in this bill. Number one, first and foremost, was to protect at-risk homeowners, particularly those with incomes below the income threshold set by the Enhanced Star Program, which is currently $98,700 and updated each year pursuant to state law. For these homeowners, we wanted to make solutions where they could resolve their delinquency status while still preserving their equity and avoiding displacement. Second, we are taking steps to make sure that as the city pushes to collect outstanding debt from landlords, their tenants do not suffer from the landlords diverting funds away from building upkeep to pay back the owed taxes. Third, after protecting the most at risk, we wanted to be sure that we kept the ability to enforce and collect property taxes and water bills from those property owners who truly do have the ability to pay and should. And fourth, we do not see this bill as the final step. Instead, it's part one of an ongoing process to rethink and reimagine and continually improve how we approach the resolution of property taxes and other city charges. I want to briefly outline some of the key portions of the bill and a larger agreement with the administration. Increased outreach and transparency from DOF. This bill would require the Department of Finance to send late-payment notices 45 days after an owner is late on their property taxes, matching the existing best practice from DEP. Council would also receive additional information about water delinquencies so we can better track where the problem areas are and develop solutions, and additional reporting to track how well the bill's new programs are working and make sure that nothing is falling through any gaps. Number two is end fast-tracking the sale of subsequent liens. To reduce the number of properties at risk of having liens sold and to help manage the burden on those whose liens were sold, we would end the fast-tracking of sale of subsequent liens. We would exclude undevelopable vacant land from the debt sale to prevent these plots of land falling into the hands of those who would exploit the property in illegal ways or to harass neighboring properties. Dedicated funding, including a council initiative for estate planning to ensure our seniors have clear wills to avoid legal issues that would happen when they pass away without one, along with a $2 million annual commitment from the administration to fund outreach that will work in conjunction with the recently expanded HPD Help Desk. An expansion of new ways for property owners to resolve their debt. A new easy-exit program. Primary resident homeowners with incomes below the Enhanced Star threshold can remove themselves from the lien sale on request up to three times over three years. This will give them the space and time they need to figure out a lasting solution. A new circuit-breaker deferral program, allowing eligible homeowners to defer any property taxes that exceed 10% of their income. This would improve the affordability of their payments and address what we believe to be a key driver of delinquency. A last option to preservation housing. A final, last-resort option for homeowners who are faced with displacement because they are at the stage of having to either sell their home or face foreclosure. This voluntary program would transfer the homeowner's property to a qualified preservation purchaser or a QPP, who will lease the property back to the owner for 99 years at a rate affordable to that owner. The owner will also get a limited equity note that can be cashed in if and when they decide to vacate the property. At that point, the QPP would resell the home as a part of an affordable home ownership program. Both the lease and the limited equity note are transferable to the owner's heirs. If a homeowner's debt is sold, this bill would offer new protections. A homeowner who qualifies for she or D, certain veterans exemptions, or any other exemption that would remove someone from the scale, they can file an application for that exemption up to 90 days after the sale and have the sale undone. The 5% surcharge levied when a lien is sold will be waived for certain homeowners once they pay off their debt. We're also mindful in this process of tenants. For rental buildings that regularly appear on the lien sale list, HPD will inspect those buildings with high levels of debt to ensure these properties are not distressed. If they are, they would automatically go to the third-party transfer program. The administration also commits to share with the council a list of other such frequent flyer buildings that have demonstrated levels of poor housing conditions, but their debts do not reach the TPT threshold so that council members can continue to monitor and work to improve conditions. As part of the TPT reforms, the council will explore if some of these properties make sense for inclusion to that program for enforcement. I'd also add that my expectation is that the outreach funding will also help connect tenants and rental buildings that they come across tenant resources. Finally, this bill would create a task force with a specific focus on the city trust that purchases and enforces liens to determine if reforms or a whole-new approach could improve not just collections, but to address the city's housing crisis. The city intends, the council intends to act on the recommendations of this task force next year before the end of this session. Before I close, I want to take this time to point out that many of the harms I've mentioned can be traced back to the basic structure of our property tax system. And I once again call on my colleagues in Albany to take up the recommendations of the Advisory Committee on Property Tax Reform and finish the job of building a fair and rational property tax system. The city has pushed the ball just about as far as we can and as far as we have the power to do. We need our state partners to take it the rest of the way. Today, we'll hear testimony from the administration about this bill. I look forward to discussing how we continue to take these necessary steps forward. With that, I'll turn things over to the council to swear in the witnesses. Just note that we've also been joined by Councilmembers Sanchez and Nurse.
Good afternoon. Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Commissioner Niblak?
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
First Deputy Commissioner Shear?
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner Darga? Thank you. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Brandon, members of the committee and of the city council. My name is Preston Niblak, and I am Commissioner of the Department of Finance. I'm joined today by DOF's First Deputy Commissioner Jeffrey Shear, our Deputy Commissioner for Customer Operations Annette Hill, Deputy Commissioner Kim Darga of the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, and Acting Deputy Commissioner Albert Kramer of the Department of Environmental Protection. We are here today to discuss the pre-considered intro to transform property tax enforcement and debt resolution. As you know, the sale of liens against privately-owned properties for property taxes, water and sewer charges, and for certain other property-based charges has been the city of New York's primary mechanism for the enforcement of payment obligations on property owners since 1996. My own history with the tax lien sale goes back to 2011, if I recall correctly, when the city council, with leadership from the late Al Van, worked to add protections for vulnerable homeowners and communities as a critical part of the tax lien sale reauthorization that year. Since that time, there have been several refinements to the program, primarily designed to protect the rights of homeowners. Over the years, we have mandated more outreach, changed the thresholds for inclusion in the lien sale, and expanded our payment plan options, among other reforms. Nothing in the past, however, has approached the extent and depth of reform that is embodied in this proposal. This bill will fundamentally change how we resolve property tax debt, going further than ever before to recognize the distinction between property owners who could pay but do not and those who would pay but cannot. Before I describe in more detail these changes, let me review the process as it has worked until now. As you know, if a property owner accumulates unpaid property tax, water, and sewer HPD debt, depending on the property and debt type, that debt becomes a lien. And if the unpaid lien exceeds certain thresholds, the lien may be subject to sale. A list of properties with qualifying liens is released 90 days ahead of the sale, and owners with a property on that list receive a notice in the mail. If the owner does not take any action to resolve the debt through full payment or entering into a payment plan or applying for and receiving an eligible exemption, they will receive additional notices at 60, 30, and 10 days ahead of the date set for sale of the liens. Most liens are resolved before they are sold. In the six lien sales between 2015 and the last one in 2021, over 2/3 of liens were removed before sale because they were either paid in full or the owner had entered into a payment plan or because they had a current or pending exemption. But in the event that the owner has not acted to resolve their debt, the liens on that property are sold to a legally separate special-purpose trust created by the city. In return for the right to collect on the sold liens, the trust pays the city an amount that it raises through the sale of interest-bearing bonds. If no action is taken between seven months and a year from the sale date, then the property may be subject to a foreclosure action. Foreclosure is by design a lengthy process, typically at least two years. Property owners may resolve their debt at any point during a foreclosure action, right up until the sale at auction of a property. An auction sale is, of course, the worst-case outcome and the one that we are seeking to avoid, particularly for low-to-moderate-income homeowners through the proposal before you today. So what is different in this legislation from past lien sales? First, we start from a posture of prevention. Our goal is to help taxpayers resolve their debt and to dramatically reduce the number of owners that face enforcement actions. As a first step, starting this August, we will begin sending past-due notices to owners who miss their quarterly or semi-annual payment. This may seem like an obvious step, but it's one we haven't done before. Based on our experience with the annual October 31 debt warning notice that we have sent out for the past three years, we think reminding taxpayers that they owe us money will help keep them current with their obligations. DEP already does this and has seen a decline in the delinquency rate since they introduced it. In a change from past practice, no liens on Class 1 homes and condos and co-ops will be subject to sale unless they have independently reached the required age and amount to be included in a lien sale. This change will by itself substantially reduce the number of homeowners in each year's sale. We are mandating much more intensive personalized outreach between the time that the 90-day notices go out and the lien sale itself. We often hear that people simply did not receive the notice regarding the lien sale or that they don't know what they need to do to be removed. Our goal is first and foremost to make sure they are aware of the lien sale, and secondly, to make sure they are aware of the resources available to them to assist in addressing their particular situations, whether that be financial counseling, estate planning, mortgage assistance, legal, or other services. The proposal includes $2 million for this purpose, to work with community partners for outreach during the notice period and to direct owners to the appropriate services. We're also redesigning our notifications to homeowners to highlight the resources and options available to them, including exemptions, payment plans, and the option to gain extra time to resolve their debt. In addition, at-risk notices will let owners know the minimum amount that needs to be resolved to ensure that they are removed from the lien sale. In this way, we hope to make it less daunting for owners to begin to tackle their debt and avoid enforcement. We're creating more pathways for owners to avoid the sale of their liens. For example, even if you receive your notice in a timely fashion, 90 days may not be enough time to resolve what may be difficult financial or other challenges. So we are proposing to give vulnerable homeowners more time to address their situations. Through what we refer to as the easy-exit option, low and moderate-eligible, excuse me, low and moderate-income, primary resident homeowners may simply apply to be removed from the lien sale. In return, they'll provide their contact information so that we may continue to work with them to address their financial or other circumstances. This option can be exercised up to three times, giving homeowners up to three years to resolve their debt before any further enforcement action. We have also enhanced the availability of our property tax and interest deferral or PTA program by increasing the income threshold, which will be pegged to the Enhanced Star income threshold, which is currently $98,700, as you noted. And thanks to Speaker Adams's leadership, we are creating a new income-based PTA plan that will allow eligible homeowners to defer property taxes in excess of 10% of their annual income each year. In short, we are substantially enhancing our outreach to at-risk homeowners as well as the amount of time and options available to them so that they can avoid being in the lien sale process and address the circumstances that led them to fall behind on their payments. These measures, taken together, will dramatically reduce the number of homeowners who face enforcement action. Inevitably, there will be some owners who, despite our best efforts, will not have reached a resolution before the lien sale. There is now opportunity for them to resolve their debt more easily, even after the sale. Notably, under the proposed legislation, we will waive the 5% surcharge that is added to their total sold lien amount for eligible homeowners who resolve their debt. In addition, homeowners will continue to be able to remove their liens by applying for eligible tax exemptions up to 90 days after the date of the tax lien sale. And finally, in the event that a taxpayer cannot resolve their debt through any other means, we have developed an important alternative called the Preservation Track to allow owners to remain in their homes and retain equity in their home. Eligible homeowners will have the option to transfer their property to a community land trust or other qualified not-for-profit in return for the right to remain in their home at a cost they can afford. The not-for-profit will enter into a 99-year lease with the resident and a long-term renewable regulatory agreement with HPD that will ensure that the property will continue to be used as affordable housing. I am extremely proud of the reform package that we present today. It is the culmination of years of advocacy, hard work, and dedication by many of you here today, including members, staff, and advocates. We thank you for your input and hope that you see the results of your work reflected in this proposal. I want in particular to thank Speaker Adams, Chair Brandon, and the staff of the Council Finance Division for their dedicated collaboration on this legislation, as well as our administration partners at HPD, DEP, the Law Department, and the Office of Management and Budget. On behalf of the Adams administration and all of us, I appreciate the opportunity to testify today, and we are happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've also been joined by councilmembers Hudson and Stevens. Let me talk about revenues a bit. So our understanding has been that prior lien sales generated about $300 million in revenues from uncollected taxes and water bills. Do you agree with that assessment? And how much of that revenue was city funds and how much was it for the Water Board?
That's approximately right. Between 20, during the, the average between 2015 and 2019, if I recall correctly, was about $300 million in property taxes. And then, I'm not going to remember the number off the top of my head, but some other amount in water and sewer and other charges. But altogether around, if I recall, about $450 million usually.
Considering that we haven't had a lien sale since 2021, it would seem that the revenues should be much greater in the next lien sale. So how much in outstanding property charges do you think that, do you think DOF can collect in the next lien sale? Best guess?
That's a difficult question to answer, in part because, as you note, we haven't had a lien sale in a little while. We've had an intervening, sort of life-altering pandemic that has changed the economic situation in the city quite a bit. You know, our goal is to bring that back down, the delinquencies back down to the level that we saw pre-pandemic. I don't know, you know, we just don't know exactly how people are going to respond. We have a whole new set of options and off-ramps here, you know, that we're offering to people, which we're going to try and take advantage of. So, you know, honestly, my hope is that a lot of people will not get into the lien sale, and we will collect prior to even the lien sale process to some extent, and certainly during the 90-day notice period. Again, I hesitate to forecast a number, but I, you know, again, our goal is to sort of bring this back down to a level that was what we experienced prior to the, prior to the pandemic, when we had regular lien sales.
And regular lien sales is typically 300 million, right?
Yes, for property taxes, yes, around that.
So could you tell us right now, how much is the city owed in outstanding property tax bills?
We are owed, and I don't know if Deputy Commissioner Hill, you have that number? Or Deputy Commissioner Shear?
For the current fiscal year, the outstanding amount as of now is $839 million. We expect that to come down somewhat by the end of the fiscal year?
The end of the fiscal year is like six days from now.
Yes.
How much would it come down in six days? Go ahead.
We expect it closer to, towards 800 million.
Okay. Okay. And what about water debt?
Deputy Commissioner Kramer?
So for water debt, we're owed, we have roughly $1 billion.
$1 billion?
$1 billion, correct.
Okay. I want to talk about the graveyard trust and residual payments to the city. So 1998, the 1998-2 trust, aka the graveyard trust, has no bondholders to pay and is where older liens that have been difficult to collect end up. Because it has no bondholders, all revenues it generates are due to the city. So the trust has been collecting debts for the past several years, but from what the council can tell, at least through the end of FY '23, it hasn't sent any money to the city in at least two years. The city's ACFR showed $0 in lien sale revenues. Could you tell us why that is?
Most likely, we get a quarterly report, and there have been some money from the trust that has come in from the 1998 trust.
So what happened to those revenues? Who decides when to send them back to the city?
Well, through the contractors, we have services who manage the liens, the collection of the liens, and the trust gets the, sends a quarterly report of all of the money, comes in quarterly.
So how much in collected revenues that could be brought back to the city are still with the trust currently?
It was about $450 million outstanding on liens in the trust.
$450?
$450, yes. A lot of that, you know, the reason properties are in the 1998-2 trust is often because they're very difficult to collect. They may have no value at auction because they're an undevelopable, undevelopable vacant lot or other property. They don't, they're a brownfield. They just, they don't have any value necessarily. Anybody's willing to pay for them. Very often, it's a question of tangled ownership records, litigation, bankruptcy. So if we can't establish a clean ownership trail, obviously, we can't sell it. So a lot of the, a lot of the liens in the, in the lien sale trust, although they're, you know, adds up to a substantial amount, they're very difficult to really be able to enforce and collect.
So it's our understanding that the initial lien sale, the initial lien sale list prior to COVID used to list nearly 900 million in outstanding liens. The city only collected about 300 million of that through lien sales. So what happened to the rest?
So we include on the initial list every property that has, that shows, you know, outstanding taxes, property taxes, water and sewer debt, and other charges. And typically, that's, yes, somewhere between 900 and $1 billion on the initial list. It often turns out that a lot of those buildings are removed from this list for many reasons. They could be owned for a not-for-profit. They may be distressed and pulled by HPD. They may be in litigation or bankruptcy, et cetera. There are a whole list of reasons why a number of those buildings might be removed. Some of the funds, obviously, that 300 million, some of them are brought in ahead of the lien sale when people get their 90-day notice. Some of it's at the lien sale and some of it comes in subsequently. But the, and some of it ends up, as you, as we just discussed, in the graveyard trust because it's uncollectible. In the absence of the lien sale, though, we probably wouldn't collect, you know, that 300 million either. So although there's a lot that is there initially that shows up on the list, a lot of it is not debt that should have been imposed for various reasons or debt that we could collect through the enforcement process.
So we understand that there's a number of administrative pulls for reasons like the property is government-owned or there's a legal dispute or it's in the HPD or an EDC program. Could you tell us, how come those aren't scrubbed prior to the notice list being created?
There is a certain amount of scrubbing that does go on. There's, you know, properties that are initially put on the list and then removed before the 90-day list is finalized. But there are a lot of properties that we don't know the full circumstances of. So if a property was transferred to a new owner, like a not-for-profit or a homeowner who gets an exemption, if there are, again, legal issues, bankruptcy proceedings, title disputes, et cetera, we don't, we're not always going to know all of those circumstances. The notification itself is actually our way of eliciting some of that information from property owners.
So can, do you have commit to scrubbing the list better from the beginning so that we just focus on outreach on properties that are truly at risk?
We will, we do our best to make sure that we have a list that's clean. And again, we use this in part when we're not sure about the circumstances of our property to try and elicit information to help clarify that. So very often, you know, we won't know about some of the litigation, for example, that's occurring or disputes over a title until we find out, once we've notified the owner of record that we have of the lien sale. I don't know, Deputy Commissioner Hill, you want to add anything?
Yes, we do share the list with quite a bit of our partners. So we do a very, so they could scrub it. We share it with DEP and HPD, and they do reach out to us, and we do scrub it, as well as the Law Department. So we do, we do have a big in-house scrubbing that goes on prior to the actual sale.
So the lien sale trust, can you describe the trust and who staffs it?
So the trust is a legal entity that exists for purposes of holding the liens. It doesn't have a staff, per se. It's overseen by the Department of Finance, by the Law Department, and by OMB. And the trust, we, the trust has a trust- and by OMB. And the trust, we, the trust has a trust manager who hires services to manage the collections and resolution of the debt in each lien sale.
So when does the, the trust start foreclosures?
So it depends, but typically, it can start if, if there's no response from the homeowner, and it gets to the six-month mark. After the lien sale, where interest payments are due and there's no payment from the owner, you can start, you initiate a foreclosure action 30 days after that. So seven months after the, if there's some payment that's been made, but it stops, then we will wait till the one-year mark. Obviously, if people are working with us, we have any indication that somebody's trying to work with us to pay it, we won't initiate a foreclosure action.
Can the trust pause them if, if an owner is trying to pay off the debt?
Yes, no, absolutely. If anybody is, if anybody has indicated that they're, you know, working with us, they've made a down payment against a payment plan, or they're working on, you know, transfer of the title, or so, any other action that would result in resolution of the debt, yeah, absolutely, we won't, we won't initiate, and we will pause any action that has been initiated.
Can you tell us how many foreclosures have happened through the lien sale?
I'm sorry, I have to say that again?
How many foreclosures have happened through the lien sale?
The, it's, in the 2021 lien sale, there have been no sales at auction, right? There have not been, not, no properties have been sold from the 2021 lien sale. A couple hundred at least since 2015 have reached the sale point. You know, foreclosure actions are initiated more often, but, you know, most of the time, three-quarters of the time, they result in resolution before it ever gets to the sale point, so.
So with the trust, what's the trust contract with the servicer? What is the incentive of the servicer to work with the trust?
Yes, I can talk to that. Thank you. The service gets paid on collections. They start off at 1% on the base portfolio, and it increases as the years go by. So the, the focus is on collecting initial, the most easier ones, and they get a higher percentage at towards the end, when it's more difficult to collect. They only get paid on only collections. So they're, it's, they're, they're more up to try to get it, to get the liens resolved than not.
So how, how come the city can't do the foreclosures itself?
We could do, in, in a world of unlimited resources and where I could, you know, hire all the lawyers I wanted, yes, in theory, we could do it ourselves.
But, I mean, would that provide more flexibility to homeowners?
I don't think that it does. I mean, the process is overseen by the courts. The whole foreclosure process is overseen by the courts. And we, you know, it's a very structured process. It's designed to protect homeowners. There are a lot of steps along the way. And as I said, you know, the debt can be resolved at any point, right up until there's a sale, if that comes to that. So I think, you know, the, the basic process is laid out in state law, and is pretty much, it's going to be the same regardless of whether it's a city lawyer or a contract lawyer who's working on it.
What happens to tenants of rental properties that are foreclosed?
So I'm going, you know, in general, properties that are in the lien sale, that are rental properties, that are, their liens are sold, or that are, that are subject to foreclosure action, enjoy the same rights and protections as tenants and anybody else in the other building. I don't know if Deputy Commissioner Darga would like to speak to that.
Sure. I would just add that the, it really, to some degree, depends on the underlying restrictions on the property. So the state did recently pass good cause eviction, so even tenants that are not rent-stabilized tenants do have some protections in the case that there was a change of hands in terms of property ownership.
I would just add also, as you mentioned in your opening, we have added some vehicle here to heighten awareness, HPD's awareness of and attention to properties that are showing sort of signs of incipient distress, because they've been chronically delinquent, they've been on the lien sale, prior lien sale list twice out of the last four lists, they have a debt-to-value ratio that exceeds 15%. So buildings that are starting to show that there may be a sort of a chronic problem, that list will be given to HPD for them to look at the violations history and do additional inspections or whatever enforcement seems appropriate, depending on the circumstances of that building.
I just want to ask a couple of things specific to the bill, and then I want to turn it over to my colleagues, and then I'll come back. With regard to the preservation track, so this section, this section of the bill is based on language that, that DOF proposed, and, you know, your, your side did much of the drafting, and we appreciate that. But I want to confirm your interpretation of how this will work. You could walk me through what the owner of the property gets and how whatever they can be inherited by their heirs. Are there any restrictions that you're aware of in state law or federal law that would restrict the ability of the old homeowner and now tenant to pass along the lease and the equity note to the heir of their choosing?
Certainly. So what, what the, what the owner gets is two things really of substance. One is lifetime tenancy in, at a rent that they can, a cost that they can afford. Thing two that they get is the, an equity stake, right, that is reified in a note that is executed by the qualified preservation purchaser to the tenant, which guarantees that upon sale, including a sale that might be initiated by the tenant, that they will be able to realize gain from that sale. The, and the second part of your question, I'm sorry, concerned the heritability, right?
Yeah.
Yes, as far as we know, I mean, it's all, this is all subject to state law, of course, but as far as we are aware, with our legal review here, there should not be any impediment to heritability of either the lease itself or the, the note.
And on the circuit breaker deferral, how many homeowners do you think might be eligible for the circuit breaker deferral program?
Oof, that's a, that's a good question and an unknown, honestly. I mean, I think we, we are hoping to see an uptake overall in the PTA as we do more outreach. We think it's a really valuable program, set of programs and payment plans that are, can be very beneficial to homeowners. We want to make sure that people who are taking advantage of the program are doing so, you know, with full understanding of their options. And that's, I think, you know, we're really focused here on outreach so that we can get people enrolled in these programs. I don't really have a, you know, I don't really have any way of knowing exactly how many people we would expect to see participate.
What will the application process look like?
The application process will look like it currently does for our PTA programs. You can do it online, actually, or you can come in to a business center and, and get a, fill out an application. It's fairly straightforward, you know, eligibility checklist with some, you know, fairly minimal documentation, tax return for your income. And, you know, then we will review that and make a determination. It's a fairly straightforward process.
And you mentioned that you'd been working on a draft bill around tax reform. Does it include a true circuit breaker tax break that would be positioned to replace this?
Yes. And I, yes. The Advisory Commission recommendations, you'll recall, included a circuit breaker that was very similar to this, except, of course, it actually waived the taxes, not deferred them. But that, you know, capped the amount that a taxpayer would owe in property taxes based on their income and a percentage of that. I, I actually think this is an extremely important feature, and that, right now, the, the tax burden on low and moderate income homeowners has very little relief. People get very little relief. There are no, the circuit, the state's circuit breaker is not very generous, so it really doesn't provide that much benefit. I think that this will be a very important part of property tax reform. It will be a very important part also of helping people stay in their homes and afford to stay in their homes and not have to, and I think that alone would dramatically reduce the number of people who we ever had to consider for a lien sale.
Last question from me is with regard to the retroactive SKE and D. Part of the deal is an agreement to go to Albany to get state law around the senior citizen homeowner or disabled homeowner exemption programs, which is SKE and D, which reduces the tax on these eligible homeowners with incomes below $58,400 by up to 50%. Change would be to allow people who get these tax breaks and were eligible in prior years to get their benefits retroactively. So could you talk about how you envision this retroactivity working, and would there be limits?
I mean, we really haven't developed a specific proposal yet, so I don't know that we have a, a vision yet for exactly how this would be implemented, but we support, totally support the goal. And we are looking forward to working with you all on, on crafting legislation that we can introduce next year.
Okay. We've also been joined by council members Farias, Lewis, Powers. We're now going to hand it over to Councilmember Nurse for her questions.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. You might have said this, but I struggle sometimes with the acoustics in the room, so I'm sorry if I missed it. I wanted to talk about the rentals and tenant outreach. And since we have HPD here as well, I wanted to see if you could put on record just a little bit more detail about how you imagine coordinating and engaging tenants who are living in buildings that most likely also have a high set of housing violations in, in addition to being potentially in financial distress.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, you're asking about, yes, the acoustics are troublesome. So you're asking-
What are you saying?
I've said the acoustics are indeed troublesome. You're asking about outreach specifically to rental buildings?
Yes, for the multifamily rentals.
The, the outreach is primarily designed to reach homeowners who have often been sort of left behind in this, in this process. We've had a model where we hold outreach sessions, and we expect you to find out about them and come to us. Now we're trying to reverse that. And, and I thank you for really pushing this with me personally and us, towards a model where we go find people and make sure that they are aware of the lien sale and their, their options. We will also be, we're also developing this watch list of buildings that indicate, as I said, sort of this incipient signs of distress that we'll provide to HPD, and then HPD will do their own enforcement as appropriate to the circumstances of that building.
Okay. Could, could HPD, could you talk a little bit about how you all are coordinating and the types of outreach and what information you think would be relevant?
Sure. So as the Commissioner mentioned, there's a couple different types of outreach, right? There's outreach to the building owners that have liens on the lien sale. HPD separately, separately does a variety of tenant support and has ways in which tenants can reach out to us as well. So certainly, we have ongoing enforcement work. We will continue to do so. Tenants can always call 311 or HPD if they are concerned about housing quality.
But under this new framework, how will you all be coordinating, and what is the new type of outreach going to look like?
Okay, so that is mostly focused on the owners, right? So we are allocating $2 million. That $2 million will supplement the outreach and support that exists through the homeowner help desk that we hope to launch this summer, and will align nicely with the homeowner advocate. Thank you, Councilmember Brooks Powers, for pushing that through. And so it will be proactive, one-on-one outreach for owners in order to help them address any issues. And that could include counseling, legal assistance, technical assistance, et cetera. We separately have proactive outreach. We do to some residents as well. We are actually hoping to launch our Partners in Preservation Initiative this summer, which will be a citywide initiative focused, though, on four main geographies in New York City, where we've had higher incidences of eviction, tenant harassment, housing quality issues.
Okay, so for the multifamily buildings, you primarily will, and I'm just restating for the record, so you'll mostly be focused on the property owner, and maybe there might be, at your discretion, some proactive outreach to tenants?
Yeah, so our tenant outreach, there are, I'd say, four main ways that we do it, right? There's the ongoing enforcement work and ways that tenants can reach out through us, to us through that. The public engagement outside of HPD also has the tenant support unit and tenant helpline that can help with housing quality issues or other legal issues that they may be facing. We also allocated additional funding last year to revitalize right to counsel. There's $20 million that was allocated for that. And, as I mentioned, the Partners in Preservation Initiative.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think it would be important to consider, in these multifamily buildings, additional outreach to, to tenants as well, particularly when you have a frequent visitor to the lien sale. Making sure that those tenants have that information can, can empower them in different ways, should they need to take them, like, you know, organize for different, more drastic actions.
Yeah, so one thing I will note, that this adds newly, the Commissioner mentioned just a moment ago, the rental watch list. So for properties that are repeat, repeatedly on the lien sale list, two times in four years, plus some additional characteristics, higher lien-to-value, other issues that we're seeing, we are intending to do more proactive inspection and evaluation of those properties.
And we're also including, the bill also includes a provision that requires HPD to provide tenants in those buildings with information, including their basic housing homeowner, sorry, tenant rights, you know, information that they've developed and other resources that tenants can look to.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Brewer. Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you very much. I think I've asked this before. First of all, congratulations, everybody. This is a big project. The person who has either the rental, or in my case, empty vacant brownstones, not paying their taxes, empty buildings, I assume somebody owned them at one point, but they're pretty derelict. So I guess my, my goal would be to have it go to a nonprofit. Is that at all possible under any of these scenarios where, I mean, I don't know if you forgive the taxes if it goes to a nonprofit. I'm trying to get some affordable housing out of this big effort. I don't know if there is any way, but I'm trying to find out.
I, I think, you know, the, the primary focus here of this bill is really on resolving people's debt. Where you have buildings that are essentially, somebody has walked away from and abandoned, the appropriate vehicle for that is something like third-party transfer, which, you know, I know there have been ongoing discussions about, between the council and the administration. I can let Deputy Commissioner Darga talk a little bit more about, you know, that.
Yeah, we don't want to end up in the same situation last time, where you have a third-party transfer that's as bad as the original owner.
Yeah, we're, so two things to note. I think for one-to-four-family properties, there is the preservation track. So if it's occupied still, that is a unique new option that exists, where the homeowner doesn't have to sell in order to recoup any equity. That is, I think, substantially different from how the lien sale is operated in the past. For something in this case-
That would be, that would be an abandoned property also?
No. So if it's abandoned, then in that case, I do think that's where discussions about TPT need to come in. And we are very open and have had some discussions about reform of that program. And so I think we would be happy to engage with council about that.
Would that be new legislation? Would that be policy? Would, how would that get determined, regulations? What's, what's the way to address that?
Yeah, so you may recall, or not, we paused-
Recall everything.
I know. That's why I said, just in case, or not. But we paused TPT after the last round, which is in 2019, and the program would require legislative changes. And so we are very interested in working with city council to do that.
Okay. The other question I have is, when you have this rental agreement, which is, sounds interesting and certainly something to consider, how do you, like, would it just be on the open market? The person who would purchase it, with the tenants and the heirs to be, and so on and so forth?
Definitely not an open market. The idea in the preservation track is if an owner, after substantial counseling and work with legal services providers, decides that that's the right path for them, the transfer after foreclosure, because it would be basically a voluntary process to go through that, would be to a qualified preservation purchaser, which would be qualified through a request through qualifications with HPD. And our intent there is to work particularly with some of the communal land trusts in New York City.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Chair Brennan, and good to, good to see everyone. I first just want to shout out- I first just want to shout out so many people who work so hard, all of you, the team at Finance, especially Amra, and of course, Chair Brennan, thank you so much. And I, and I want to shout out specifically the Tax Lien Sale Coalition and Paula Siegel from Take Root Justice, who I've been learning from since, since finishing grad school. It's just, it's incredible what you all have been able to do to incorporate such a, such an enormous amount of feedback from so many different places. So, two questions and a comment. Question one, if the authorization date is through 2028, what is the incentive to implement reforms proposed by the Tax Lien Task Force sooner than that? Question two is following up for, to Councilmember Sandy Nurse, also a leader on the Tax Lien Sale Coalition. You know, 80% of the units that have been included in the last four lien sales were occupied by tenants, not homeowners. So to me, this, this, you know, gets us into the Venn diagram with TPT, but does the administration know, can you tell us, how many New York City properties with outstanding liens that would qualify them for the lien sale in the current proposed formulation do not have recorded physical distress conditions? And how does the administration know that? And I'll close with my comment.
So, let me answer the second question first. I don't know that we do know it until we've actually done the analysis. So we're gonna go through closer to the lien sale date, although we can look at this, you know, we can look at this now, but it will obviously change. But we can get a sense, I think, of how many buildings there are that sort of meet the, the threshold of debt to value and a bit on the lien sale, two last lien sale lists or two of the last four lien sale lists. And HPD will look at that and see violations. So we'll get, you know, we can begin to get a sense, I think, of sort of how large a universe of buildings that is. I think we kind of did an initial look and we thought it was a few hundred, a few hundred buildings. And with respect to the task force, so the task force, first of all, has a timeline. And I think, you know, the goal here was to have a task force that reviewed certain aspects of the lien sale process and made recommendations that could be acted on by this council if it required legislative action. So I think that will, you know, help keep our feet to the fire. None of us wants to fail on this task force, and I think we would look forward to having a constructive conversation with folks. We come to this, you know, with the same good faith that we tried to bring to this legislative initiative. And, you know, I think we really want to take a serious look at the proposals that are on the table and the options and come up with something that will work for everybody. There's not, you know, we can certainly come back and amend this law prior to its expiration.
What is the timeline for the task force as written?
The task force, I believe, if I remember correctly, the, the members are supposed to be appointed by the end of August this year. We had need to have our first meeting sometime in September, and then I think we have a mid, mid, sort of midway point report, and then a final report in October, if I believe, I'm looking at Councilmember Nurse, but in October of next year.
Of this year?
Of 2025.
2025, okay. Thank you. And, yeah, I, I...
Sorry, I misspoke. Final, final report in August of 2025.
August of 2025, okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, I would just highlight that, and I think you're hearing it from Councilmember Nurse, from Councilmember Brewer, and now from me, that we're just wanting to make sure that we capture with these strongest enforcement programs that we have, the Tax Lien Successor, and hopefully what will, knock on wood, be an incredible effort to reform the third-party transfer program as well, that we're not leaving any buildings in a gray area, right, that they do not qualify for the Tax Lien Sale, but, you know, they, they're not distressed enough or whatever the case may be. So I just look forward to continuing those conversations, making sure that renters are part of the equation, and, yeah, making, making progress on all of this. Thank you, thank you all, and thank you, Chair.
Great. I think we've taken a solid first step in that direction with our, you know, our watch list here and our more attention to buildings and tenants. But yes, we certainly have a ways to go to make sure that we can do that more effectively and more, more holistically.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. Hello. I just have some questions about vacant land. I heard feedback. I don't know what that was. Okay, this bill is ending the sale of liens. Oh my God, what is that? Okay, better. Oh my gosh. The mic gods don't want me to speak. Whatever. This bill is ending the sale of liens on undevelopable vacant land in any future lien sale, which has been a problem. And I've spoken to your agency a few times about that. How much of the vacant land in past lien sales would have fit this category?
Well, let's see. I'm gonna ask Deputy Commissioner Hill, because I think we've looked at vacant, vacant parcels that have been sold.
Was sold? Remember the 100 vacant lots that were sold? So the 100, 100 vacant lots have sold?
A hundred vacant lots that have been sold. Two-thirds of them were undevelopable for whatever reasons. Mostly, you know, they were landlocked, landlocked or underwater, landlocked meaning they're inaccessible from the street, essentially underwaterly, meaning they're literally submerged. They have title issues, they're too small, they're brownfield, et cetera. So about, about two-thirds of those properties were actually not developable.
Thank you. And what will happen to liens of this kind of vacant land that was sold in a prior sale? Will the trusts that hold them still pursue foreclosure even though we know it often results in bad outcomes?
Well, you know, again, a lot of the, a lot of the properties that are in the 1998-2 trust, the unfortunately named graveyard trust, are there because they were, they had no value, you know, that no one was willing to buy them at a foreclosure auction, and the owners were not interested in, you know, paying because of the value, the property didn't have any value to them. So that's part of why they were in the lien sale in the first place and why they ended up in the graveyard trust. And again, that's largely because a lot of them are basically undevelopable. We're, we can, you know, we're gonna do a more in-depth analysis of what's in the graveyard trust, but a lot of it is, a lot of it is, you know, vacant properties that really have no economic value and could not be developed for any purpose, really.
And then, like, more specifically, let's say one of these properties was actually sold, and now there is a problem. Is there any remediation that you are looking into? Because when I've had conversations with your agency and the law department and the mayor's office, the response back was that this is a civil matter and it needs to be adjudicated because rightfully so was sold in, you know, illegal lien sale.
Right. I mean, I, I think that that is true. That it, once it, once it's sold and it's really out of the city's hands and it's a civil matter, I think that's why we have the provision in the bill that, that prohibits the sale of vacant, undevelopable land, so that it's not, you know, used for purposes that are essentially just, you know, harassment or, or not, you know, are insubtilious in some way or another. So it's really, we want to, again, avoid sort of the kinds of situations that you're talking about by avoiding the sale of vacant land and then doing a more in-depth review of the, of those properties.
Okay, and what do we do about the debts on these properties now that they can't go into the lien sale?
I'm sorry, say that again.
What do we do about the debts of these properties now that they can't go into the lien sale?
You know, a lot of the debt is frankly very difficult to collect at this point because owner, owners have no particular, they don't have any, you know, reason to pay because they don't have any economic value. So for them, it's, it's, it's a losing proposition, and they will walk away. And it's very easy to make ownership records, you know, kind of opaque and difficult to really track down a person that you could actually try and get money from. So a lot of the times, we're not going to be able to resolve debt on some of these properties.
Okay, I understand that. And I asked our internal wonderful team, who has been working on this, this question as well, but I'll also ask you, what type of criteria will you develop or do you currently have that would deem a particular property undevelopable, undevelopable? Because I still have, like, two existing issues that are still unresolved. And so I just, you know, hopefully there's something that we can still do, even though I know it's kind of technically out of the city's hand. But I just really want to make sure that something like this never occurs again. And so one, one plot of land is the end of a shared driveway easement, which, you know, Queens was lots of farmland back in the day and a whole bunch of other things, and so I get it. And then another parcel of land is like a triangle in like the middle of a historic landmarked community, and both have like lots of different issues with the current property owners who purchased it from the lien sale. It's just a mess. And so I don't, I would love to know if those types of properties would be the types of properties that would now be exempt. So, you know, what will you use to assess those types of properties?
I'm gonna ask first Deputy Commissioner Shear to describe that a little bit more, but I will only note that, yes, Queens is rich with bizarre tax map issues, so.
So, Councilmember, one of the most important things we're looking at is the size of the property. So properties generally under 1,700 square feet, or where the length or the width is under 17 feet, as well as looking at the zoning of the properties. But we're happy to look at those two examples. If you send them to us, and we can let you know how they would be classified under this bill.
And the bill, the bill also provides that an agency designated by the mayor, so I will not designate HPD at this time, but when the mayor designates HPD, will review these properties for, you know, using the criteria in the law, and also we can, you know, kind of review if there are other things that you think we should be taking into account to make sure that, you know, we're, we're doing a, a review of every property to make sure that we're not selling properties that have any development value.
Yeah, just, I would just add, in terms of the outreach piece, even like reaching out to the neighbors, because the people on the block, it's all, and now that block is also like a historic block, so you have like historic houses that have this weird issue. And so I think even if they would have reached out to the people on the block to ask them to like purchase the, the property, they probably would have paid for it because it was really cheap versus now getting extorted to use their driveway, which is crazy. So I think that would be helpful, too, like where you do have like these slither lots or other types of properties that are, that are adjacent to, you know, a building or different homes that may be also outreach to those neighbors and asking them if they would be willing to purchase it from the sale or would be interested. And I don't know, maybe can be gifted. Because the other plot of land, and I'm gonna shut up, I promise, the other plot of land was primarily being managed by the local civic. So they planted flowers, they lawned, they mowed the lawn, and now they can't do that because someone put an RV on this triangle, and now the weeds are overgrown. And so, you know, I think it would be helpful if like local stakeholders also knew that this was happening to give them an opportunity to like purchase or, in the case, hopefully gifted land.
Noted. And I, I saw Deputy Commissioner Dargah taking notes, so I certainly, you know, community outreach is a priority. That's useful, and, you know, whenever you identify parcels like this, please bring them to our attention.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salam.
Good afternoon. In my district, there are many co-ops which are left unmaintained and unrepaired, and because of this, many of the co-op shareholders have been living in unlivable conditions for years and some more than a decade. These unlivable conditions include having to live with no AC, no heating, broken locks, and no system of security. While the residents' maintenance fees have increased, I'm afraid conditions such as, such as, as such, do not quite increase property value at the same level of cost for the maintenance that has been increasing, even though residents do not see any maintenance or repairs being done on their property. On top of that, they've had to pay property taxes for a property that does not offer them livable conditions and security. So to that, my question is, what are the programs, if any, that will allow for property tax rebates or credit for residents of co-ops or condos who are, who aren't being provided with maintenance and repair by the management companies?
So there are no, there are no programs like the, what you've just described, per se, buildings, buildings that are neglected, the corporate, the, you know, the co-op corporation can always bring a tax, to the tax commission, an appeal of the value if they think the, the building has been overvalued. So that's, that's the primary route there for addressing property tax valuations. I'll let Commissioner Dargah speak a little bit to co-ops and how they deal with that.
Yeah, so just for awareness, and, you know, co-ops, multifamily co-ops also have to comply with the Housing Maintenance Code. So if there is a shareholder or a tenant that has concerns about housing quality within the building, they absolutely should call 311 so that HPD is aware there's a concern and we can come out and inspect. So that work is certainly, you know, is something we are, we take seriously. I would also note that for co-ops that are struggling, there are some forms of financial assistance. They may be able to access through HPD. HDFC co-ops can take advantage of a wide range of assistance from property tax exemptions to low-cost loans. We also have a training and technical assistance contract. So if it's a housing development funds corporation specifically, there are absolutely resources in HPD. The other thing I would just note is that HDFC co-ops are not eligible for the lien sale. They're excluded. Other cooperatives, the, they could take advantage of J-51, which hopefully New York City Council will soon take up for authorization. That was authorized by the state last year, and that would help the co-op undertake repairs within the property and could reduce their property tax burden.
Okay. Councilmember Nurse, you're good? Okay. Thank you all very much. Look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members, and we appreciate very much all the work that everybody here has put in and your input to this bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to open the hearing for public testimony. I want to remind the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times, even for Councilmember Brewer. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Furthermore, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. Once you're recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, pre-considered intro T-2024-2164. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the first hearing, of this hearing, I'm sorry. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. Now gonna have the first panel, Paula Siegel from Take Root Justice and Will Spiesack from the New Economy Project.
My testimony is short and sweet, but I think the points in it are really crucial. And I thank the council members for raising some of them already. So I think we're, we're all having one conversation, which is a huge relief. And there's a lot in here for vulnerable, low-income homeowners, which is also a huge relief. There's still some pieces that seem to have been left on the cutting room floor. And I really want to make sure that we get this right while we have everybody's attention, right? Before we shift our attention to other programs that this council also needs to, to really work on. And this is the time to get this right. So the first piece, I think a couple of, a couple of members already alluded to this, but tenants are kind of being left out. We heard from the commissioner that there will be some outreach to tenants, but it's actually in a rarefied set of buildings that that outreach will happen. It's only the buildings where the lien-to-value ratio is fifteen percent and they've already been in two lien sales. That is such a small set. More than eighty percent of the units that have actually been cycling through the lien sale are tenant occupied. They're not owner occupied. And those folks need to know if their landlord is taking their rent and then not paying their bills to the city. They might be able to call in HPD to do an inspection. They might be able to actually influence the situation. And we really need the partnership of those tenants. There's also a little bit of walking around tenants in tax class one properties. They're actually left out of the set of buildings that HPD is going to inspect mandatorily. There are lots of tenants in tax class one properties. May I continue? Yeah. There are lots of tenants in this city that are in tax class one properties. I know that, I, I heard, the word I heard in conversations with staff was they don't want to induce the awkwardness of having HPD show up at somebody's house if they live there. That isn't, doesn't sound like a good reason to leave tenants in one-to-four unit buildings out of inspections, one-to-three unit buildings. Really excited that this is step one and to hear from the administration that they're seeing this as step one and that they're seeing the task force as step two. Limiting the authorization to three years or even shorter would give that task force real teeth, right? We worked really hard to time the task force with this council so you all could work on their proposals and legislate them before, before you're all gone, right? Before there's a whole new everybody everywhere. And giving the administration five years of runway, four and a half years of runway for authorization, that really works against that idea. Just a couple of other key things we heard from the administration, that they do some sorting out of, oh, we've got some problem properties, we're going to put them somewhere else. We also know that they get some advice about when they do that. We need to, we need a little bit more transparency than the bill calls for in terms of finding out who actually makes those decisions. But we also want the city to keep control of the problem properties. Some of them, Councilmember Williams described in her district, because they're a problem does not mean, oh, pass them off to Bank of New York Mellon and the private servicers and the private attorneys that that bank hires. Actually, because they're a problem, the city should be keeping them. The city shouldn't be transferring any more properties into the graveyard trust. We're really grateful for the budget side of this conversation. I'm not going to read the end of my testimony. It's all there. I think it's great to see, to see the estate planning and to be starting to design a tangle title program for New York City. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is this on now? Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Brennan and councilmembers. My name is Will Spiesak. I'm a senior program associate at New Economy Project. Among our work, we help to coordinate the New York City Community Land Initiative, which is a coalition of CLTs, and we are a member of the Abolish the Tax lien Sale Coalition. I'm not going to read my entire testimony, which I will be submitting as written testimony. But just to mention, we are very excited about a lot of the progress that this bill promises, particularly opportunities to divert distressed homeowners from the tax lien sale and create opportunities to keep people in their homes. But just to echo Paula's testimony and some of the things that we would love to see the council continue to fight for and push for, one, certainly limiting any reauthorization of the lien sale to three years maximum is really important. It's our leverage to make sure that the administration actually follows through with its promises and administers the recommendations of the task force. We would love to see, you know, an affirmative review of the graveyard trusts. We want all those properties to essentially run through the, the new screens that this bill would produce so we know what's really going on. There's tons of properties that we have no idea what's happening with them. So we'd love for that to be resolved. Third, HPD inspections for tax class one rentals. This was actually something that we heard would be included in the bill and was very disappointed to see it wasn't. Yes, most tax class one homes are owner occupied in the city, but that's not true of the tax lien sale list, which are mostly rental occupied. So we would, we think it's really important that, that they be included in HPD inspections and there be a TPT-like program to administer the transfer of those properties to CLTs or other nonprofit owners. And then lastly, just to mention, you know, this bill takes some really major strides to improving the, may I finish? That's great. Okay, great. Takes some really important strides to improving the tax collection system in New York City. But the success of a, you know, new equitable tax collection process will really depend on the passage of some other legislation, namely, most importantly, third-party transfer. So the council must act to introduce and pass a new TPT bill that will create a viable program for neglected multifamily buildings to be rehabilitated in our community ownership. From a process standpoint, this bill should have been prioritized over the new lien sale bill. Now the council has to kind of backpedal and work to, to duct tape the new TPT program into, into this new lien sale process. So we thank Councilmember Sanchez for working diligently to get that bill ready to get introduced. And we hope that the council acts, acts expeditiously to get that bill passed. And the second thing I wanted to mention is, you know, the, the proposed task force will explore options for alternative entity to enforce the city's debts. We know one promising option is to create a New York City Land Bank. And Councilmember Brewer has introduced a bill that would do just that. So we want to call on the Housing and Buildings Committee to hold a hearing on Intro 570 as soon as possible. And we've raised amid our suggestions to the sponsor for how to strengthen the bill. And we hope the administration will not actively try to block progress on that bill because the Land Bank could act as a third-party entity to hold those liens and work with CLTs and community development corporations, other partners to preserve affordable housing, keep people in their homes, and put neglected properties into community ownership. So we hope that all these, these adjacent legislative initiatives will take place expeditiously after this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you all very much. It was great to work with you through this process and it's certainly not over, so, but we appreciate your partnership. Thank you. Okay, now we have some folks testifying on Zoom. We're going to start with Kristi Peale.
You may begin.
Good, good afternoon, all. My name is Kevin Wolf. I'm actually standing in for Kristi Peale. She was not able to, to make it at this time. I did want to thank the chair, as well as thank the speaker and the members of the Finance Committee and the City Council for your leadership on this very important issue. And I did also want to just say that, that generally we agree that there's been a lot of important reforms that are in the tax lien sale reauthorization here. And, and it's, it's been great to work with the council and the staff on this important issue. We do have five different points that we wanted to highlight. So, you know, overall, we, obviously, the reauthorization of the tax lien sale, we still believe, just as a rule, is a harmful blow to our small homeowners, particularly our black and brown homeowners and low to moderate income homeowners. The tax class one properties, which, you know, cover one-to-three family units, won't be exempt. And that's something that the Coalition for Affordable Homes did recommend. And, you know, we, we do think that that does put a displacement pressure on those homeowners. And then in addition, publishing, continuing to publish the list will draw the attention of bad actors and does generate scams and increases the displacement. The other, the other point is that with our tax class one properties, these properties are forty-two percent of the properties on the sale, but they're only twenty-one percent of the total sort of outstanding lien sale debt to the city. And so there's a disproportionate effect for our tax class one properties, and we wanted to draw attention to that. But again, the council has had a leadership role and, you know, historically, the council has had a leadership role in preserving homeownership, and we think that that's, that's been very important. You know, with the reforms, and there's been a lot of, of positive reforms.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Am I able to, I just have?
Yeah, it's good. Ten, twenty seconds. Guy, just finish up.
Great. With, with the reforms, they are very important reforms, but are, one of our key points is that the implementation is critical. And so Chair Brennan, we were very happy to see that you just reiterated the commitment to the $2 million for outreach. If we don't have that implementation and support from the nonprofits around, around the city, then, you know, a lot of these will not be able to help our homeowners. And so I, I did want to just point that out. And if I can just make one last point, you know, because we're on the eve of Juneteenth, I did want to make one last point. We see that our black homeowners, they're five times more likely to be on the lien sale than white homeowners. And they're concentrated in a lot of the, the districts that I know this committee represents in Southeast Queens. I saw Natasha Williams here, Central Brooklyn and the North Bronx. You know, we want to make sure that we are, in implementing this system, we're not causing displacement of our, of our black homeowners in particular, and that we're making sure that the resources and the legal services and, and financial services are there to protect those homeowners. And so we want to continue to partner with the council on this, on this critical issue. And, and thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to speak here.
Thank you. Now we have Jacob Kendall Schneider.
You may begin.
Thank you. So I, I just want to, you know, start off and, and just thank everyone that has worked on this. You know, it's been a lot of work, the council members, staff, and the departments have put a lot into this. And, you know, I just, that's all great. And I guess I didn't say this earlier, I am Jacob Kendall Schneider, and I'm on the board of the East New York Community Land Trust. While the bill offer, you know, while the bill offers promising protections for indebted low-income homeowners, and this is something we've been working on, advocates and community members for years, as Commissioner Nyback said, this, it's a good first step, right? And so we hope that these measures will keep people in their homes. And we also appreciate the efforts that have been taken to assist tenants. And while all of this is important, you know, we hope that there are opportunities to improve the bill before a full council vote. And so one of, the first thing is that we think more can be done to address the issues that tenants experience. And so given that renters' households are the vast majority of residential, you know, properties or people impacted by the lien sale, we suggest that the commissioner of finance notify tenants of all lien sale eligibility, eligible buildings that their landlord is in arrears. Tenants, including those living in tax class one properties, should be provided with information on how to contact HPD for building inspections and other support that can assist them when a landlord receives a ninety-day notice. Second, and this is a huge, you know, thing for us, the reauthorization period should be no longer than three years. A shorter reauthorization period, you know, rather than the four and a half proposed in the bill would increase the likelihood that the recommendations of the task force will receive, will not receive, you know, the consideration they are due. Three years, there's some fire there. Third, we're encouraged by the transparency provisions in the bill. These will begin to open kind of the black box.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Can I, like, twenty seconds?
Yeah, sure. Just swap up. Yep.
That the trust system will allow the public to better understand how it works and how alternatives could be formed. But we know that, you know, some entities that advise finance have been left out. And so, you know, we think that all entities working on the, on what liens go in and where they go, those documents should be made public. And then finally, no lien should be placed in the 1998-2 trust. You know, people live, our neighbors and tenants in these properties, right? And so the city should use what mechanisms they have to rectify the problems these properties are experiencing rather than transferring them to a privately managed trust. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob. Now we have Joan Erskine.
You may begin.
Hi. I'm Joan Erskine. I represent Brooklyn Level Up. First of all, thank you all for hearing the community advocates on this matter to the extent that you have. You've worked hard and incorporated so many of the initiatives to protect one-to-three family homeowners that community advocates have urged. Good work. These policies will shrink the number of properties on the tax lien sale to start with, and that is a good thing. Excellent. However, the bill as proposed falls short in two significant ways. The bill does not adequately protect tenants whose landlords don't pay property taxes, the very people whose homes are at risk in the case of foreclosure, and interestingly, the people actually living in the majority of the properties listed on the last four tax lien sales. Although the bill, as it now mandates outreach to certain tenants in certain situations, it does not mandate enough. There are many more tenants, those in tax class one properties, for example, who need the city's attention and options to preserve their homes. At the very least, the city should notify those tenants of their landlord's delinquency and help them hold those landlords responsible for housing violations, should there be any, and actually take ownership of the property when appropriate. But more importantly, the tax lien trust is itself a poor way to deal with the delinquent taxes. By transferring the liens to the trust, the city, one, fosters mysterious collection of properties in the 1998-2 graveyard trust, very aptly named graveyard trust, an opaque instrument from which the service, the servicers, and apparently no one else seems to be profiting. That bill seriously needs to be lifted. And two, it abdicates its responsibility to collect taxes, ultimately sacrificing revenue to the trust itself as the liens are sold at a discount and burdening property owners whose liens are sold with higher interest rates and fees. But more importantly, the city loses any of our...
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Last thing?
Go ahead. Finish up.
More importantly, the city loses any leverage it has to move delinquent properties back into productive use to the benefit of city dwellers rather than real estate speculators. The city could use the leverage of the liens to transfer the properties, excuse me, to community-based organizations and community land trusts that will develop the property into community assets in the form of truly impermanible affordable housing and/or parks, green spaces, other community assets. Finally, I recommend that the tax lien sale be authorized for only a maximum of three years in order that the recommendations of the task force be timely implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, with that, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much, colleagues.